Can you everybody please stand up for the pledge of leisures?
Welcome everyone and welcome to our Clarendale friends that are here today and people watching at home. Okay, first thing on the agenda, roll call please.
Trustee Bailey.
It's not here.
Trustee Clancy.
Here.
Trustee Angler.
Here.
Trustee Fedora. No, trustee Germany.
Here.
Trustee Gilbert.
Here.
And Mayor Matinius.
Here. Okay, next item on the agenda is Discover Mokina, scouting American troops forty and forty-one spaghetti dinner, Joseph Sander.
Hello everyone. I'm Joe Sander from troops forty and forty-one for Boy Scouts. And I'd just like to thank you guys for verifying our spaghetti dinner door-to-door ticket sales. Because it's a great way for people to come, you know, get involved and it helps the troops out a lot. It's our biggest fundraiser. So, I know it's always great because the leaders make the food and the scouts clean and serve and there's volunteers washing dishes and it's super fun. And I have tickets here for anyone who hasn't gotten the chance to buy one yet. So if you would like one, whenever's the best time. Because I've got a good day.
Okay.
Adults are fifteen dollars, kids are eight, children under three eat free. It's on October eighteenth, it's a Saturday from four to seven. If you can't make it for the whole time or you don't feel like sitting down, we have takeout, there's spaghetti, salad, we have desserts. And it's at St. John's United Church of Christ, it's on Second Street. And that is all.
Thank you Chris and Ido, you have your number here, we have it. If somebody wants to take it up here, we'll give you a call.
Okay.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Excuse me, respectively, we have people in the hallway, could we get more chairs?
We don't, it's the capacity in the room.
Will you ask those people to come in and stand somewhere?
No, because of capacity.
We can't because of the capacity in the room, you can't have more than what the capacity is in the room. I apologize. Alright, next community calendar, clerk Martini.
The community calendar for October two thousand and twenty-five. October sixteenth is the Planning Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals meeting at seven o'clock PM at the Village Hall. October eighteenth, the scouting of America troops forty and forty-one spaghetti dinner in St. John's UCC. It's for four o'clock PM to seven o'clock PM at one zero, one one zero four six Second Street. Fifteen dollars for adults, eight dollars for ages three and twelve, and free for all ages under three. October twentieth, the Village Board work session is at six o'clock PM at the Village Hall. October twentieth is the first free fall leaf and branch pickup, bags of leaves and bundled branches. New Way will continue to pick up all other yard waste and grass clippings through the end of November. Call seven oh eight four seven nine three nine zero zero or visit www.mokina.org to sign up. October twenty-first is a recycle day. October twenty-fifth, the Mokina Police Department, the Mokina Park District and Gearheads Auto have a free trunk or treat at the main park. It's from four o'clock PM to seven o'clock PM at one zero nine two five West La Porte Road. October twenty-fifth is also the Village of Mokina Free Shred Event and Food Drive at Front Street Metro Parking Lot Downtown Mokina on the south side of the tracks. It's from nine o'clock AM to eleven o'clock AM with a two-box limit per vehicle for shredding. Additional collection for eyeglasses by the Mokina Lions Club, for American flags by the Mokina VFW Post seven two five. And they're also collecting food donations for the Frankfurt Food Pantry. October twenty-fifth through the twenty-sixth is the Mokina Women's Club Annual Holidays Arts and Crafts Show at Lincoln Way East High School. It's from nine o'clock AM to three o'clock PM at two zero one Colorado Avenue in Frankfurt. There's over one hundred and twenty-five crafters, five dollars for admission for ages twelve and up. October twenty-seventh is the Village Board of Trustees meeting at seven o'clock PM at the Village Hall. October thirty-first is trick-or-treat hours in the Village of Mokina from three o'clock PM to seven o'clock PM. We also have put on an additional food trucks on Front Street. So please join the Village of Mokina for one last food trucks on front for two thousand and twenty-five. It's this Wednesday, October fifteenth, from four o'clock PM to eight o'clock PM in downtown Mokina.
Thank you clerk. Public comments, anybody here for public comments?
My name is Jim Slank, all the one one seven one two Cuchipon Drive. You know, last month I was very excited because we had a blood trifecta here in Mokina. We started out with St. John's having a blood drive on a Monday from seven to two. Then the following Tuesday, we had the Knights of Columbus come up with seven to two. And then we had our own Berndt Square Blood Drive that went from nine to three. I hope, I mean, I love having this trifecta because it gives everybody a chance to come. No one to say, I can't make it Monday. Oh, hey, we can go Tuesday, oh, we can go Saturday. Now, we know how much a police car costs, which is unbelievable some money. But can you imagine what one of these blood mobile machines cost? I mean, they must cost double for the police. Now, they bring out the blood truck, four people plus all the people at St. John's or that help out. And the sweet spot is twenty-six pints of blood. You know, I mean, that doesn't seem like a lot of money spent just to get the sweet spot is twenty-six. Now, luckily at St. Mary's, we were able to get thirty, Berndt Square, we were able to get thirty, but St. John's only got sixteen. I'm hoping that we can do this again. I'm hoping that we can get support from the village because I think St. John's is our neighbor right here. And they support the Boy Scout troop. I, you know, I think the Boy Scout troops is a great deal. St. John's is a lot. So I'm hoping that next year we can get the village and one of the trustees to really help St. John's out. And let's get them up to thirty pints of blood next year. And I, you know, I cannot imagine myself ever going to Seven Blue. I can't imagine sitting in my car, I can't imagine. But I always enjoy going to Clancy's and all these interesting people I've talked to. And I think I said last time, you know, when you hear in Chicago that fifty people got shot, only five died. That's because the police are there, they're able to stop the bleeding, the medics are there, they give them the plasma. And then you go to the two greatest ERs in the country, either Christ or Denver, Chicago. Well, I met an Army Reserve surgeon at Clancy who was an ER doctor at Denver, Chicago. I mean, this guy has served in Afghanistan. I mean, if you do get shot, you want to go to Denver, Chicago. So I'm saying it, but it's the plasma that saves lives. That's one thing we can do is give blood. And I'd love to see the blood bank come over with blood. So anyway, I hope next year we can get the trustee or somebody to really help push St. John's because they are our neighbors.
Thank you gentlemen.
Thanks, sir.
We volunteer Dan Gilbert to go first. Next on the agenda is consent agenda, John Tomasowski.
Thank you mayor, good evening ladies and gentlemen. Consent agenda this evening is as follows. First item is a motion to approve and authorize the use of municipal village resources for Mokina Chamber of Commerce. Magic of Mokina Christmas tree walk scheduled for Saturday, December sixth, two thousand and twenty-five in the downtown area in the vicinity of the Wolf Road and Front Street node. And in the landscape area along the south side of Front Street between Wolf Road and the west entrance of Front Street Metro Lot. Second item is a motion to adopt ordinance number two zero two five dash O dash zero two one. An ordinance retaining the classification number of liquor licenses issued in the Village of Mokina. And authorize the village president and village clerk to execute same. Third item is a motion to approve ordinance two zero two five dash O dash zero two two. An ordinance amending the village authorize the village president and village clerk to execute the same. Next item is a motion to approve an agreement between the Village of Mokina and Comcast Business on the terms and conditions therein contained. And authorize the village president and village clerk to execute the same. Next item is a motion to approve ordinance number two zero two five dash O dash zero two three. Approving master license agreements for fiber optic installation with clear wave fiber. Campus Communications Group Incorporated and authorizing the village president and village clerk to execute set agreements. Next item is a motion to approve the voluntary resignation agreement or release between the Village of Mokina and Crossing Guard Kathleen Omen and authorize the village president to execute the agreement on behalf of the village. Next item is a motion to renew a license agreement with the Forest Preserve of Will County in the amount of three thousand nine hundred and six dollars and seventeen cents. To authorize the village president and village clerk to execute same. Eighth item is a motion to approve the minutes from September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five special board meeting and work session. And final item is a motion to approve the minutes from the September twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five board meeting and work session.
Motion please.
Move to approve consent agenda, item six A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, and I is depicted in the October ninth, two thousand and twenty-five request for board action prepared by the village administrator.
Saki.
For the motion probably second, clerk Martini.
Trustee Angler.
Aye.
Trustee Germany.
Aye.
Trustee Gilbert.
Aye.
And trustee Clancy.
Aye.
Motion passed. Next item on the agenda, we have finance report, monthly accounts payable, John Tomasowski.
For the board this evening for accounts payable in October, the total is one million nine hundred and eighty thousand, two hundred and ninety-eight dollars and thirty-five cents. Couple bills highlight here. First one is for seventy-five thousand, one hundred and fifty-eight dollars and sixteen cents to the Arriba Construction and Supply for storm sewer repairs. And the next one is a hundred and sixteen thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. And it's our second payment for our new software system, DSNA for the village software.
Motion please.
Move to approve the monthly accounts payable in the amount of one million nine hundred and eighty thousand, two hundred and ninety-eight dollars and thirty-five cents.
Second.
We have a motion probably second, clerk.
Trustee Angler.
Aye.
Trustee Germany.
Aye.
Trustee Gilbert.
Aye.
And trustee Clancy.
Aye.
Motion passed. We have appointments and proclamations, appointment of Keaton Lashine to the position of maintenance homeworker, Dan.
Yes, we have two appointments for public works here tonight. The first being for maintenance one, this is a position that's open in the public works department based on the appointment of Luke Doosier to the maintenance two position. So staff went through our interview process and selected Keaton Lashine as a best candidate for this position. Keaton is a graduate of Illinois State University with a bachelor's of science in construction management. He has worked at Will Township in road maintenance and most recently with Washington Township in roadway maintenance. He has extensive knowledge in both road maintenance and repairs as well as snow plowing operations, culvert repair, and knowledge with multiple pieces of heavy equipment. Staff is happy to recommend and Mr. Lashine has the candidate. And he'll be an asset to our workforce as he is added on.
He's here in the audience, in the hallway there, and I'm happy to recommend that to the board at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Prologan. I can have a motion please.
Move to approve the appointment of Keaton Lashine to the position of maintenance one in the Streets and Grounds Division at the starting step for their position pursuant to the collective bargaining agreement between the Village of Mokina and the International Union of Operating Engineers Local One Fifty, Public Employees Division, July first, two thousand and twenty-two through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-six, effective October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Second.
We have a motion probably second, clerk Martini.
Trustee Angler.
Aye.
Trustee Germany.
Aye.
Trustee Gilbert.
Aye.
And trustee Clancy.
Aye.
Motion passed. Keaton, you have anything to say or add?
Appreciate that.
I appreciate the opportunity. I look forward to learning some more. And I look forward to getting to know my fellow coworkers and getting to know people with talent. So, thank you.
Thank you. Hey, you're up again. Next appointment, Kevin Taylor. Position of interim assistant mechanic.
Thank you mayor. The second position is our current assistant mechanic is out on medical right now and will be out for an extended period of time. Therefore, staff is recommending that we appoint in the interim Mr. Kevin Taylor as to that role of assistant mechanic. Mr. Taylor has currently voluntarily been assisting the current mechanic, Mr. Deluski, in his duties, trying to aid him while that assistant mechanic's out. Mr. Taylor has been a maintenance one worker here since two thousand and two. And we feel that he'll be the best fit for this person or this role in this interim role. Therefore, Mr. Taylor is also here, but I'd like to recommend him to the board for appointment to the interim position.
Thank you, Mr. Prologan. I can have a motion please.
Move to approve the appointment of Kevin Taylor to the position of interim assistant mechanic in the Public Works Department at the starting step for that position pursuant to the collective bargaining agreement between the Village of Mokina and the International Union of Operating Engineers Local One Fifty, Public Employees Division, July first, two thousand and twenty-two through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-six.
Second.
We have a motion probably second, clerk Martini.
Trustee Angler.
Aye.
Trustee Germany.
Aye.
Trustee Gilbert.
Aye.
And trustee Clancy.
Aye.
Motion passed. Kevin, you have anything to say?
Sure.
Thank you.
I just want to say thank you guys so much for the opportunity. I'm super grateful. Me and my family have been looking forward to this moment for a long time. And it's been an honor to be able to just thank you most, for letting me just work on the cars and all that stuff. It's been a good occasion. They're all embarrassed for some reason. Just, just thank you so much. It's been a big help for my family, so.
You're welcome.
Looking forward to keeping up with this fleet. It's looking good, so.
Kevin. Mr. Taylor, please introduce us to your family.
Yeah.
Well, this is just my wife. I brought my wife today. My kids are wild. We also just got back from vacation today, so.
What's your wife's name?
This is my wife Emily.
Thank you so much for this opportunity.
Thank you for what you've done so far with the village and for the things to come. We appreciate it. Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you mayor, thank you.
Well, it's my honor for our next appointment, swearing in I should say, Mokina Police Department K-9 Kong.
Ryan Betten over here.
He's very nervous.
He'll be able to get his paw off.
Nervous too, man.
I would like to have pictures of him before he goes. Well, after they go, they do, right? It's gonna be fancy.
Are you coming down?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mayor Board, I am very pleased to announce the addition of the first member of Police K-9 in Mokina Police Department. This is a significant milestone for our agency and represents a continued commitment to enhancing public safety, improving officer support, and expanding our department's capabilities. Our new K-9 Kong is a one-and-a-half-year-old German Shepherd imported from the Czech Republic. Kong is trained in narcotics detection, tracking, area searches, and obedience. K-9 Kong's handler is Officer Rick Crisione, who recently completed a certified training program with the K-9 Service Department of approximately ten weeks. The acquisition of K-9 Kong was made possible through the generous financial support of Will County State Senator Glasgow, who fully funded the purchase with drug asset forfeiture funds. Mr. Glasgow cannot be here with us tonight, but he will be out Wednesday morning for some photo ops and to meet. So again, we're sincerely grateful for his investment in our community and his support of innovative law enforcement initiatives. K-9 Kong and Officer Crisione are already working, active duty, and they'll be available to not only support our department, but also our surrounding agencies that would need it. In addition, we'd like to formally recognize additional financial contributors to Kong's success. First, I'd like to recognize Mr. Sean Lear from US Overhead Doors, who donated funding for a ballistic vest for Kong through the Protecting K-9 Heroes Not-for-Profit Foundation. And Stacy is here with the vest tonight, sort of representing that association. Secondly, I'd like to recognize Mr. Ken Beaver from Good Neighborhoods of Lincoln Way Not-for-Profit Foundation, further generous donation of two thousand dollars for Kong's continued success. I'm pleased for Mr. Nick Lawson, who's going to be here representing.
Yeah, thank you.
You as well. So we look forward to introducing Kong to the greater community throughout ongoing community engagement activities. At this point, I'd like to present Officer Kong with his vest, Officer Crisione with Kong's badge.
Make Kong look.
I want to get Kong up and.
We have this sweet toy over there. We're still working, I'll be.
Thank you, thank you.
And now the oath of office.
Use K-9 Officer Kong solemnly swear and affirm that you will faithfully perform your duties as a K-9 officer for the Village of Mokina's Police Department. That you will protect and serve the residents of the community with courage, loyalty, and integrity. That you will support and uphold the Constitution and laws of the United States, the Constitution and laws of the state of Illinois, and the ordinances of the Village of Mokina. And that you will pledge to stand beside your handler, Officer Crisione, and to serve as a loyal partner and guardian. With your training, instincts, and heart, that you will detect danger, pursue justice, and safeguard those in need. And in recognition of your service, that you will graciously accept the occasional treat and belly rub for your better compensation. So hope you dog. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
This is very exciting.
Thank you so much. Little social. Pictures?
You did it?
Alright.
I said John. I could be wrong. John, did you take a picture of me up there? Did you take a picture of me up there? You know, I'll take the photos.
Thank you so much. Are you in the morning?
More please.
Yeah.
He's just excited.
He said go Bears.
Yeah.
I think we should give Kong a hand, don't you? Alright, next on the agenda is old business, Emerald Social at one zero zero two zero West one hundred and ninety-first Street. There will be Brent Kim.
Thank you mayor, thank you elected officials. We do have one item up here this evening for Village Board Action. This is the Emerald Social PUD. Applicants Katie McHenry and Kelly Devine do the callers of what will become Emerald Social. Location is ten zero two zero West one hundred and ninety-first Street. And what they're seeking this evening is the Village Board's final approval to amend the PUD to operate a restaurant with food trucks and outdoor entertainment. The proposed location, which is lot one on this screen, is part of the. The proposed location, which is Lot 1 on this screen, is part of the Oliveri Business Park. Lot 1 is approximately 1.53 acres and is adjacent to the Fire Department to the east across Oltowski, and then to the west is a strip center, Lot 5, with several different restaurants and other uses in that same P U D. Land use and zoning, this is a C-1 district, shopping district, surrounded by C-2 and some I-1 to the north. Project history, this project came before the Board for conceptual consideration on May 12, 2025. At that meeting, there was a good discussion about what the special use would entail, and that gave direction to move forward to a plan commission meeting. The plan commission meeting occurred on September 18th. Their favorable opinion was received that evening that included engineering, planning, zoning, lighting, landscaping, and so this evening, we're here as the third and final step to the process. The business plan for Emerald Social, you can see here to the right is the... This is what the site will look like. You can see the green space surrounding the property, the additional sidewalk on Grotowski to the east. There will be approximately 99 parking stalls to the south. The restaurant will be centered on the northern half of the building. Behind that will be an open outdoor area, and then this is what is being called Food Truck Way, Food Truck Row. This is where the food trucks will be, along with an outdoor stage. This shows a little bit more closely some of the specifics. The monument signs will be at the northeast corner and the southwest corner. Restaurant, covered patio, food truck alley, and then in addition, there will be a kids' play area. So this is meant to be a family-friendly environment, family-friendly zone for, you know, many different types of parties and family invitations and sporting events and those types of things. And so this is what the two owners are hoping this project will become. Conceptual renderings, you can see the front of the restaurant. This would be facing south. Here is kind of an indoor-outdoor look with the food trucks in the back, the covered patio. This is, again, this is a rendering. Front elevation showing the sign, the Emerald Social sign, which we'll look at a little bit closer, but the Emerald Social sign here in the center. And then the rear elevation, and this is what was just in the rendering with the covered patio. The wall signs, this is the Emerald Social wall signs that will be on the actual building itself. And then the monument sign here next, since there is an Oliveri Business Park monument sign located here, the applicant could not place it there, so that is why the locations are here and here for the actual monument sign. Outdoor entertainment, warmer months, May to October, the family-friendly events, acoustic music, community events. There is intended to be a lot of action, a lot of community events, a lot of family-friendly events. That is the intent of this project and from the applicants, the excitement that they've shown and some of the different projects and some of the different nights and events that they've shown to the staff, I do think it's going to be a great opportunity for the residents of Mokina to enjoy some outside time and to, you know, just enjoy some time with family. Summary of some of the variations, so these were all discussed at plan commission. Landscaping variations, reduce the interior island size requirements and the tree plantings. Those tree plantings have been replaced. They've been placed outside of those islands to allow the permanent landscape and the utility and drainage easements. This is similar to the rest of the P U D. Parking stall size requirements, this is something that has occurred on some of our recent projects, 18 by 9 instead of 18 by 10. Bestoon lights as part of the permanent outdoor lighting solutions. Those are the overhead string lights, rope lights, string lights, I should say, with the light bulbs that hang off. Updated zoning to C-2. This would require a variation from the minimum lot size, and then the courtyard setback reduction to 10 feet. All of these have received plan commission and staff's recommendation to move forward. And with that, Board Action, so it's time for the Board to consider this project. I know it's been ongoing for some time, but we're here this evening to pass it back to you, Mayor, and we do have Ms. Kelly Devine and Ms. Katie McHenry here to answer any questions. They're the owners. I should have introduced them at the beginning of my apologies.
You did. Thank you. Where are they? Is he here?
They're over there.
Would you like to add anything? Any of you or both of you? Okay.
Not yet.
All right, thank you so much. Okay, can I have motion, please?
Move to approve ordinance number 2025, page 024, granting approval of amendment of the Oliveri planned unit development and a special use permit and zoning of Lot 1 to C-2 Commercial Highway District, and allow for outdoor entertainment, mobile food trucks, and a restaurant at 10020 191st Street, and to authorize Village President and Village Clerk to execute saying.
Second.
Okay, and motion, probably second. Any questions from the Board? Nancy, Clerk Martini, make a call, please.
Yeah, Trustee Engler.
Aye.
Trustee Germany.
Aye.
Trustee Gilbert.
Aye.
Trustee Clancy.
Aye.
Motion passed. Congratulations. Welcome to Mokina.
I just wanted to say a word.
Oh, okay, now you want. You want to make sure it passes, right?
Yes, or it's...
All right. Good evening. My name's Kelly. This is Katie. We're from Emerald Social. We just wanted to thank the Village of Mokina and everyone who has worked with us throughout this process. From the start, the support, communication, teamwork from the Board, Mayor, and most importantly, the staff, Brent, Cynthia, Teresa, Kristoff, were tirelessly with our team to ensure it got to the finish line. As small business owners, we've heard how challenging it can be to bring a new business idea to life, but our experience in Mokina has been nothing but positive. We truly felt welcomed and encouraged every step of the way. We believe we picked the perfect home for Emerald Social, and we can't wait to open our doors and get back to this incredible community. Thank you all so much, and shovels and the promises.
Thank you. Thank you both, and welcome to Mokina. And remember, when you're a business in Mokina, you have a partner, that's us. So we'll be there. Thank you.
Can't wait. Thank you, guys. Thanks.
Congrats.
Thanks.
Okay. Next item is new business, bid recommendation, wastewater treatment plant, sludge, activated sludge, Dan Pollock.
Thank you, Mayor. Next before the Board for consideration is a bid recommendation for the RAS pumps at the wastewater treatment plant. That's the return activated sludge. These are heavy-duty pumps for very affluent that's recycled back into the cleaning process for treatment of our waters for very heavy viscous fluids. Previously, in 2023, the village went through a process where we replaced pumps four through six. This is the next step, where we're replacing one through three. We had the bid results that we did receive for this project, and we received three bids, with the lowest being Domi Mechanical Industries, Inc., excuse me, in the amount of $204,888. This is a little bit more. We have seen the cost increase since we did replace those four through six in 2023, where that was just under $180. With that being said, staff is recommending that we award this to the lowest bidder, Domi Mechanical Industries, in the amount of $204,888.
Thank you, Dan. Motion, please.
Move to accept and approve the bid for the RAS pump 1 to 3 replacement. Based on the bid documents, an award, a contract to Domi Mechanical Industries, Inc., in the amount of $204,888. An authorized Village President and Village Clerk to execute saying.
Second.
We have a motion, probably second. Any questions for the Board? Nancy, Clerk Martini.
Trustee Engler.
Aye.
Trustee Germany.
Aye.
Trustee Gilbert.
Aye.
And Trustee Clancy.
Aye.
Motion passed. I'm on there, Mr. Pollock.
Thank you.
Okay, next, Emerald Social, comments.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Kent, leave us out of the studio.
Thank you. New businesses for October 2025 that we'd like to welcome into the community. Acupuncturist Wellness Center, this is a new business. Action Behavior Centers, this is another new business. Frank Shrimp and Chicken, second location. This is on the eastern side of town now, so we want a more centrally located, less than one more east. Serenity and Wellness Studio, this is a new business. No Limits Distribution, Inc., another new business. Taco Tavern has been opened, but this is the final occupancy. They had a temp occupancy, now they're officially official. And then Lace Med Spa, this is another new business, so I welcome everybody in the community to go out and investigate these new businesses, you know, shop and see what they're about. We also do have, for Halloween, we do have the Halloween store this year that is located in Mokina Marketplace. I know everybody's probably heading over there for their Halloween costumes. I know that Mr. Buck just gave me a smile, so he's been there.
Is that what you're wearing? I wear it every day.
So, thank you, and looking forward to the next item.
Thank you, Mr. Kent, and that time of year for Halloween, and also leaves and brands. So the free leaf and branch pickup here with the Department of Public Works, October 20th through 22nd will be the first round. As we traditionally do, please schedule a pickup. You can do it online here at mokina.org. As you can see, the star in the upper right corner for the featured links, hit that, submit your work order, and it'll be picked up. The other way to do it is call here for the clerical staff. We have Village Hall, 708-479-3900. All those ladies will do an excellent job working with you. As we traditionally, oop, I keep that right there for a second. As we traditionally do, branches need to be bundled with a string of twine in lengths of no more than four feet. Leaves need to be in bags, and we strongly encourage the use of brown paper bags. And a little time here before trick-or-treating and Halloween, but once again, just to remind the general public, we are getting calls here in the Village Hall. Our trick-or-treat hours here for Halloween will be from 3:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. And back by popular demand here is if somebody does not want to participate for whatever reason on Halloween, and just let everyone know in a courteous, respectful way, we do have the no trick-or-treat signs here available at Village Hall or can be printed off our website as well. And last and certainly not least, we had a great community event here, Volley for a Cure this past week, and although Trustee Gilbert was on the wrong team, he assured me he took it a little light on him, so he didn't want to burden anyone on their team, so we want to thank him for that and highlight some of his athletic prowess there. It's way good. With that, I'll hand it to the chief here to give his...
Thank you, Mr. Tom Soski. Yeah, as you said, it was a very well-intended event. We always look forward each year to participate in the Volley for a Cure. As you know, October is West Cancer Ordinance Month, and this is a great fundraiser that I'm proud of the officers that show annual, year after year, try to contribute to it. Specifically, you see here in the photo Officer Jeff Kowalscheck next to me. Him and his wife are, I think it's just every charity, nonprofit event that we have in this community, whether it's Special Olympics or Mokina Miracles. Him and his family come out in droves. You see Officer Zerneki, Officer Price next to him, Officer Mavro Giannis, our very own mayor in the middle. You see Heather Fane, Officer Fane next to him. You see Chuck Bunders, our CSO supervisor back. Next, Tim's Officer Wynn, my Minister of Assistance, Sarah McCarthy, Detective Kim Malone in front there, and then, of course, our very own Deputy Chief Randy Stumpf in the background. Thank you all for coming out and supporting this wonderful event.
Well, thank you. Another great job here by our police department for a good cause. So, that, Mayor, Board, we hand it back to you.
Thank you. Mr. Tom Soski? Next is Trustee Commons. Trustee?
Okay, let's see, I've got a few today. Congratulations to the Mokina Junior High Baseball Team. They came in second in state. Way to go, boys. Yesterday, my 18-year-old granddaughter, Emma, her Hawks softball team came in first place in their championship. Congratulations, Emma, and team. The Lions and Fire Department, pancake breakfast. What an amazing event. Everything was delicious, and it looks like they had a great turnout. I also attended the CED After 3 at Innovation Center in Romierville, and they had the high school internship program successes there, so there were a lot of high school kids there that got to work during the summer and talked about their experiences. So there were several chambers and high schools there talking about it, so it was a really great thing. Volley for a Cure was amazing. Everybody did great. I'm sorry I missed Men Who Cook. I didn't hear about it because I'm not on Facebook, but that's okay. And last but not least, happy birthday to my fellow trustee, Melissa Fedora. And that's all.
Okay, Trustee Germany.
Yeah, I'd like to welcome the new appointments, Mr. Machine, Mr. Taylor, and this morning you have Kong. My excitement of the night for me, anyway. Also, yeah, Melissa, I'd like to congratulate Luke. Jason Luther, Mokina PD, went in first place Saturday night with his bacon jam over Irish mashed potatoes. He took first at Men Who Cook. Team Marvoro Giannis.
Marvoro Giannis.
Did pretty good. They took second place with the appetizer, smoked pulled pork, queso, and Mexican candy. Team Kowalski, they took second for smoked pulled pork and mac and cheese, so they kind of, they smoked the whole thing Saturday night, so, and I can't tell you how happy Jason was when he was up there with his number one award. Congratulations, Mokina Police, to Bar Mee did well. That's all I got, Mayor.
Thank you. Trustee Gilbert.
Welcome Keaton, Kevin, and Kong. And also, Volley for the Cure was a great night. Mr. Mayor, thanks for sneaking in some pictures. That was great.
Good action shots of you, that's all.
They were. They were. So, yeah, good cause, great night. I think they raised over $3,000, $3,600 or something like that, so it was a, it was a great night. That's all I got.
Thank you. Trustee Clancy.
Congratulations to all our new businesses who are entering into the village in the month of October. Best of luck to you. Keep an eye out for that Emerald Social. I got a good feeling about that. Really cool concept. And then I'm also looking forward to our work session, the plan people here tonight. So that's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Clancy. Clerk Martini.
Yeah, I'll pass for tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Just a couple of things from me. Just remember, everybody, we've got food trucks on Wednesday. It's the last one this year, so please come on out and support. Don't forget the scouts and spaghetti dinner on the 18th. I want to congratulate Keaton and Kevin for their positions, and also can't forget to congratulate Kong. I gave him a treat, he almost got my hand, but... But, no, also Volley for Cure was a great event, very competitive, I got to say. Both sides were really competitive, it was entertaining to watch. So, and Mr. Gilbert, I think you did fantastic.
Thank you.
Also, I want to wish Melissa Fedora a happy birthday. Her birthday is today. And with that, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
We got a motion, probably second. Clerk Martini?
Trustee Engler.
Aye.
Trustee Germany.
Aye.
Trustee Gilbert.
Aye.
And Trustee Clancy.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Getting ready for work.